Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order for October 13th. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we'll go to town administrator, weekly update.
Good evening. All right, the first thing to share with you is the upcoming pumpkin carving that Mary Grant is doing. I want you to take note of it on October 23rd. Looks like it's two to four. There's a nice big pumpkin sign out on 109 and they're hoping as always that selectmen or maybe the liaison will be able to attend. Another event coming up that the library asked us to mention is their Crock Fest. This year, they're actually going to be having it at Barn Lights on Hopper Road. It's on Saturday, November 6th from 5:00 to 7:00. This is when you enter your best chili or chowder and get involved in the cook-off. So there's flyers around town for that as well. Last week, we talked about the 911 signs that the fire department is encouraging all houses to have. It was recommended by a couple of you that we think about double-sided. So we have changed our signs to double-sided. The price is now $25. So that covers the double side of the shipping and a small donation to the neighbors, helping neighbors and the fire department, which would include any installation if necessary by the fire department. So place your orders now for those. Next is a notice from the town of Wakefield that we are in a butter for a planning board, a major site plan review application. You're notified that the Wakefield Planning Board is conducting a public hearing on Thursday, the 21st. This is for a property on Province Lake Roads. The town must own an budding property down there and there's a sidewalk earlier. So you're going to notify it as a butter. The information is there if you'd like to review it. Yesterday and today, my office participated in two webinars from the Secretary of State's office, one concerning Title 21A and the other concerning voter registration. These were webinars that are preparing for the upcoming November election and incorporated some law changes that we'll update you more on next week that will affect us. Code enforcement officer has completed another training. Over the weekend, he did the commercial energy code. So he has two left to go and is continuing to work on those. We received a notice from the Department of Defense Veterans Emergency Management, State of Maine, addressed to the town of Newfield and the town of Acton, saying that the, our records indicate the town of Newfield and Acton are the owners of Balch Pond Dam. Per the dam database, the emergency action plan expires on November 6th of 2021. They're wanting to know if there's any changes to the EAP and they want to update their database with the current information. EPAs must be updated every two years by state law. So they're asking for a response. There is a form to complete with the dam owner and operator. This is something the Newfield generally handles. I've got to call into the Newfield town administrator. We'll complete this together and make sure it gets back to the state.
Do you have a copy of that?
I'm sorry?
You have a copy of that action plan, I believe?
Yes.
Because I did the last, well, two of them ago when I was fire chief.
Right, so the plan, I think, will continue, right? It's just the updated database.
Basically, it's just contact information.
Yep, and that's what it looks like. And we, don't we pay a dam keeper for Newfield? That's what he handles.
Yeah.
So. For your review are the, from Maine Municipal Legal Services, is an updated effective October 1st American Rescue Plans consideration for municipalities. Remember that we've been paid already for half of the American Rescue Plan funds. These funds cannot be spent without townspeople approval, so at some point, it'll be on a warrant. But this gives you more information as far as how the funds can be used. We did send a question to legal with some of the things that we had talked about as to whether or not they could be spent for that. So as soon as we get a response, we'll think about having a workshop and we'll let you disclose what you kind of talked about maybe doing with the money. Next is a notice from the Saco River Corridor Commission. Saco River Corridor requires that they notify the town on variances that they received. This is a property owner at 356 Raccoon Road, seeking an after-the-fact permit for a paved driveway expansion and replacement of retaining walls in a large vegetation plan. So there's a heated-
After the fact?
After the fact.
So it's already done?
I'm sorry?
So it's already done?
That's what it sounds like. So they are having a Zoom webinar on October 27th. If anybody wants to have input, we'll make sure the code officer gets that as well.
I'm sure he's got to be involved in that.
Sheriff's Department has given us statistics for September. I'd say it's good news that we didn't get a most notable event this month. So we got just the call breakdown. You can see that it looks like a majority of the calls are administrative, some community police contact comes in a close second, building area checks, follow-up investigations, motor vehicle stops. But that's available to the public as well. And the last thing is just a little something for the camera. I don't know if you can see that. State of Maine issued a new license plate that's now available. It is a lighthouse plate. So that became available starting this week. That's all I have, Sir Chairman.
Okay. Warrant bills, you guys have all signed up, right?
Yep.
All set.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay. Minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last selectman's meeting on September 29th.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay. Department head, committee chair updates.
Good evening, Leslie Berlin, Road Committee Chair. Last night, we had Colin Greenan from the Army Corps of Engineer come in and talk to a lot of the residents who live on West Shore Drive. And the, he gave a lot of great information. So, and he's willing to come back and help us at any time that we might need him. I had talked to Jennifer a week or so ago?
Yep.
Or maybe, I don't remember exactly when, about needing a attorney opinion from our land use attorney to see what rights and responsibilities that the town of Acton and also Inland Fisheries might have, since they are saying that they own half of the culvert. So, and last night, the Square Pond Association gave me a letter from an attorney. They had an attorney opinion done. I emailed it to all of you. I don't know if you had a chance to review it or not.
So who, who had the attorney opinion?
Square Pond improvement.
Square Pond, okay.
Yeah, so, but they provide, they provided me with that, that letter last night, which you should have in your emails. So I'm not sure if, if you still want to go ahead with our attorney to have an opinion drafted. Because at this point, you know, until we know what rights and responsibilities that all the parties have, it's tough to know how to move forward.
The opinion that you sent to us pretty much explained that we had the, you know, we had the responsibility of doing it because it's a down way.
Taking care of it.
Right, right.
I don't see any ways in the, you know, the opinion that inland fisheries has anything to do with it, other than they own the land, but we still have the right of way over the land.
Right, right.
So, our responsibility.
I didn't want to move forward until I knew that we had that piece taken care of.
We used Drummond, right? That's where we got the opinion from, correct?
That's what they did.
Well, we used to. I mean, Leah Racham, who wrote that, used to work for George Parkinson.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's.
But we use them now and then.
Occasionally, yes. If we have a conflict or, yep. So she did speak to me right before the couple of days that I had off and then between taxes and the webinar. I spoke to Joe about it and told him that I'd send him an email. We didn't meet last week, even though I had gotten a verbal from both of you, but then we got that. And, I mean, it's pretty clear. I don't know that you need another one unless you still want it.
I know, I'm bringing, I'm not, you know, that's not my decision to make. That's your decision, so.
Well, when you read it as the road committee chair, do you feel like it's clear?
I thought it was very clear.
Yeah, it says, I think the board did.
I do too.
Yeah, I don't think we need to get another opinion.
Do we think, is inland fisheries, have they seen that letter? Are they questioning it at all?
They, I just received it last night, so I don't, I don't believe that they have seen it, you know?
Well, the opinion says pretty much whatever we have to do in that section due to road maintenance, the town of Acton is all going to do it.
Yeah, on a hook.
And it said that a butter really cannot decide what gets done. So I don't, unless they want to chip in and start paying for some of it, I doubt it.
Well, I mean, if they did, I'm sure, we all know what they would want, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I just wanted to make sure that that piece was put to bed before we moved forward in trying to determine, you know, what would be the best avenue to, for, you know, for design, so.
A lot of people from Square Pond show up?
Yes.
Yeah, they were, was it positive?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and actually, the, Mr. Greenan actually commented on, you know, how respectful and thoughtful that people have been in both meetings where, so I feel that it was a positive thing in having him come down both times.
Being out at the site was a good, I mean, people got a lot of good information the day we were out, out there.
Yes, yeah.
And everybody seemed to.
And, and he did a run-through also of, of what happened when we were at the, at the site. And, you know, and everyone was given an opportunity to ask every, any questions that they had. And so it was, in my estimation, a positive thing.
And I'd just add, just so the, the public is aware, with Monday being the holiday, Wednesday being the board's meeting, the board of selectmen are on a time crunch with the superintendent at the transfer station. So we interviewed last night at the same time, so that's why no one was present.
Yeah.
That was the only night we had to schedule them, so.
It was, well, it was, it was, yeah, it was recorded, so.
We just wanted you to know why they weren't there.
Right, you know, and I was glad that it was recorded because, you know, people who couldn't make it to either one wouldn't, you know, now have an opportunity to see what he has to say. And he, he's been great, you know? He's been very forthcoming, you know, with any information, answering any questions that, that people have had. I've been talking to him now for over a year. And he's very, very helpful and told us last night that he's willing to come back down because he's made those relationships with us. So he, he wants to see us succeed.
Nice.
So, we'll, we'll move forward and.
What's the next step from here?
What I, what I think, well, we need to start looking at different alternatives for replacing it. There's been a lot of things talked about, you know, there was talk about replacing it with a stream crossing, replacing it in kind, because apparently, there's several ways that it might be possible. And then also, we talked about perhaps doing the same type of installation as we did over on Canal. So now, now it's a matter of trying to gather that information as to what is feasible, cost and all of that, and getting those different plans in place to present to, to you guys and to the, the townspeople. So, that's where, that's where we are now, then.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay. Let's go down to old business, transfer station superintendent.
So just leaving it on there as old business, as I mentioned, the board did some interviews last night and we'll have a more update hopefully next week.
Okay. Sand bids.
All right, so I spoke to Adam on the phone, so we'll put Will on the spot. Do you want to come up for a sec? Or was it the other way around? Or maybe I?
Sorry, sorry.
I did, okay, sorry. Blown together after a while. So last week, we opened the bids and we had two. Seth McCoy was at $10.25. Landscaper was at $10. I did speak to Adam, as I mentioned, and he was good with landscapers, thought he had good, good experience with them in the past and they were a little better. What are your thoughts?
Same thing. We had them last year. They delivered what we wanted. They got good sand and they were, you know, if we needed more, they said they'd give us more in the middle of the winter time if we needed it, so.
Excellent.
I recommend going with the landscaper depot.
Okay, so looking for a motion and some initials.
I'll make a motion. We go with landscapers depot. And what is it, $10? Excuse me, $10 a yard.
Send that down to you guys first. And I'll second that.
All in favor? All good? Okay, so we're going to go with landscapers depot, $10 a yard. Okay, fire department generator.
Okay, so there's been some discussion over this, I think a couple of weeks ago. So I did spend some time with Rick Smith and the electrician to kind of figure out where we're at and make sure that everything's in line. A couple of things that, well, one of the things that we should point out in the beginning is that if you go back to the bids, the bid that Craig Norman actually was awarded and that we discussed a little bit along the way was actually $25,500. When you look at the fire chief's budget request, in his actual budget that was presented from him, he requested $25,000. We never caught the difference, certainly, we should have along the way, but nevertheless, $25,000 is what was approved from the voters. So, out of that $25,000, the first thing that we did before they started is that they gave him a deposit of $12,750, which essentially is about half. Purchases half the generator. He did sell it to us at cost, which was $21,500, and bought a transformer switch to go with it. So that portion covered that. The next invoice that we got was for $2,733. He broke that down. About 1,500 of it was a generator and 1,200 was extras. It's coming, being paid out of building maintenance because they had to install a new meter box for the alarm to attach to the other building. The next bill that we got was for $58.89 and that one also was broken down. A majority of that was conduits, is it?
Conduit.
Conduit, I never say that right. Conduits to connect the two buildings, because remember, as Rick told us, that while they dug it out, there's no alarm or anything on the building. So a majority of all that, well over 4,000, almost 5,000, was for the extras and a little over 1,000 was part of the actual generator itself. So, to date and based on the balance that we have left, so he says the only extra additional is going to be wiring, because the generator did have to get moved down a little further because of what it was sitting on, what it was going to sit on. That was only $250. So when all is said and done, he confirmed that we expect to be about $47 shy of the $25,000. So we will be within budget. The treasurer has.
Theoretically, we're $553 less than what he originally quoted.
Well, yeah, technically, because we didn't spend the extra 500 because we didn't, we didn't appropriate that amount. But the treasurer's been reviewing the invoices carefully with the fire chief and the electrician, making sure that they're billed out of the proper places, if it's generator-related or if it was the extra stuff based on the other building. A note too regarding the generator is that fire chief wanted to make sure we got a public thank you to Robin Hamm for taking the old generator down to the recycling center. We did receive cash with a slip, had a little over $200, which per the warrant article, went back into a particular fund. So that money was processed by me personally and the receipt's been done and the treasurer has it all. So we got the money from them and it's been put back in the account. So that is done and it's going to be under budget.
I think in future, probably what we ought to do is make sure that when a project like this is done, that we let the fire chief know that we know where this is going before it goes there.
Yeah, and we, and Rick and I did have those conversations and he accepts that and understands that, I mean.
I don't like getting blindsided when some of the public asks where to go, we didn't know where to go.
Well, yeah, but I mean, in all fairness, not to take Rick's side, but in all fairness, you guys signed a check request giving him the deposit of it. So he, that was his way of saying, you know, sign this for $12,500, that tells you I'm ordering it. So he took it as you okayed the check, so you knew the job was going to start going?
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, you're talking about the old one.
The old one.
Tom, I'm getting rid of the old one. Before we disperse of any, anything, we at least be notified before it gets.
So the warrant article says anything under, like, $5,000, so that would be like?
We, we make that decision whether or not it's that, not, not the individual.
Okay, so if we get rid of a couple of deaths?
Because the problem is if somebody sells something off a couple hundred dollars and it's well worth more than that, and then they come to us and say, hey, that was worth more than that, why'd you let it go? Well, we don't know, because we didn't have anything to do with it. We, we really ought to be notified before any town property gets discarded.
So we'll send something out to all department heads saying, before they discard of anything, of any value, you want to know about it in advance?
Equipment.
Okay. Property?
Property.
Okay. Okay.
I just think it's clean that way.
Yeah, no, no, I know. I just don't, I just want to make sure we're understanding it, so we're all, you know what I mean? So. One other thing, and not to jump around, but the transfer station pad has, work has been started as well. You approved that sealed bid, remember? I think it was Pat Stevens?
Yeah, a couple of months ago.
Yep, so that work has started down bottom. It'll happen over the next couple of days. So Bob asked for some patience if you're going up in that area. And once that's done, that hopper will be able to be repaired from the mishap that the truck had.
All good? Okay, fresh air system. So I guess I'm going to, so I called our heating guy and when we asked for a fresh air system, we asked for a fresh air intake. On our quote, it was a fresh air intake. A fresh air intake is different than a fresh air-to-air exchanger. So when I called him, he did do a fresh air intake in that furnace there, but what he did on the other furnaces over there, because he looked up some stuff about COVID and all this and we're worried about the fresh air, he ended up using platinum filters, which was above and beyond the cost of what we were going to pay. Because we, he'd only charge an extra $500 through the fresh air intake. But he told me, I think it was like $300 or $400 per filter for each one of those units in there, so, so he kind of ate it on that. But, so right here, I had him email us explaining what was going on and, because we want to get this clarified, because the other day, when this question came up, I was talking about a fresh air intake, not an air-to-air exchanger. So, this is from Luke Senical, Mouson Valley Tech. You guys asked me to add a fresh air-to-air, air to the unit, which is different than an air-to-air exchanger. I believe it was a misunderstanding between the two applications with myself and the selectmen. I found no laws or codes on fresh air for commercial buildings. I asked around and they said there's nothing set in stone. I did find stuff on COVID for commercial buildings. You'll see the, that attached and where it says air, fresh air and added plasma air cleaners on all units, which is accepted for this application. We could add an air-to-air exchanger. Average cost installed is 3,000. My opinion, it would be a waste of money, a waste of money. The voting hall is properly, poorly insulated and there is a tremendous amount of fresh air exchange already happening. Luke Senical. So he did what he felt was correct and I feel it was fine. So there was probably a miscommunication between, I don't believe between us, because we asked him for an air, an air, fresh air intake. We didn't ask for an air-to-air exchanger. So I guess the confusion is with the person who asked the question. So I am fine with it. That's, I guess.
The thing to that, as far as I'm concerned, if he says it's a waste of money, you know, and not, it's like a.
You're talking $6,000.
Yeah. You're talking to the heating guy that knows more about it than any of us.
Well, that's it.
Didn't he feel?
I'll go with what he says.
Didn't he feel that the filters, what it was that he did put in, were better than?
For the COVID situation, he had looked up and said that for the COVID situation, that that would be beneficial to us. That's why he installed them at a higher cost than what he, and, and he didn't charge us any extra for that, he just did it.
The only thing I want to find out now is what's the maintenance to those? What do we need to be looking forward to? But that's easy enough.
It's probably something, there's probably ought to be maintenance every year anyway.
Could be every year, it could be every month. I don't know with, with the filters, so.
Yeah, we ought to.
Something you can ask him.
We probably ought to do that.
Just to see, just so we know.
Yep. So. Okay, okay, we're going to go down to new business, abatements and supplements.
Okay, so I think this is going to be the last of our tax issues, hopefully. And although we have, we had two last week and we had five this week, O'Donnell's wants you to, to know that they appreciate your patience with this. Remember, last year was the, for pretty much the entire year, Dennis was in that car accident and I was way home from work and someone stepped in. And he's been dealing with Acton for years and some things just got missed and oversights. The good news with abatements and supplements is everything can be corrected before anybody's money is brought in. So that's, you know, that's the simple piece of it. I mean, there's only, there's a couple more. But two things that I want to make mention is the two abatements that we, that you guys signed last week were calculated at the previous tax rate, which was $12.05. And the tax rate was $11.95. We didn't catch it. It was caught this week when we went to do an abatement that should have cleared out the entire account because we billed the wrong owner and the numbers didn't match, so we contacted them. It's a difference of 50 cents on one and 35 cents on the other. So we essentially have given them credit for 50 cents more than we should have and 35 cents for the difference of the 10 cents in the tax rate. Can check with the auditors. I mean, it's, it's really not worth avoiding those abatements and redoing them for, for less than a dollar.
It's just going to cost us more.
But we want to be completely public and let you know that those two totaling less than a dollar were done at 12:05. I think one was the building was removed at a $5,000 value and the other one was the wrong acreage size. It's your call, but we just want to put it out there for the public. Okay, so this week, we'll start with the two simple ones. Whole Nine Yards reached out to O'Donnell's, felt like the building value was, was overassessed. This is the new building on 109. They did go out, they came down and physically went out and looked at it. They lowered the valuation on the building from $457,839 to $379,930. So they took $107,000 off the assessed value, giving them an abatement of $12,8951. And that was after an entire walkthrough, which they weren't able to do before. So that's the first abatement. The next one is on the Bowdoin property over on map 128, lot 7. This is a property that, it was a large property that's been split two or three times when it was first built. When the property was, when the property existed, there was a house on it, there was another house put on it. When the split happened, the house stayed with the original lot when it should have gone with the split. So the abatement for this one is the revised valuation indicates that the building belongs to the other owner. And you're going to see a supplement for this to offset so that we build the correct person. House value was $155,000, so the abatement is for 184676. So those are the two abatements that are a little different. These three abatements, the first one going to Dennis Irrevocable Trust on Dennis Lane, he just was not the owner of record as of April 1st and was able to prove that with a deed. So the entire tax bill to the Dennis family was abated and we did supplement the new owner, which you'll see next. The next two are identical. Kaylee and Tucker Brown were not the owners of this property at 256 lot 23 as of April 1st. We supplemented the right person. And then Mark and Melissa Sibley, also the original tax bill was sent to the wrong owner. So an abatement for that. So these abatements, you're going to get matching, you're going to now sign a supplemental tax commitment where you're committing to the tax collector to now collect this amount of taxes. You've got David Foley in the amount of $7,755, which is the Sibley one. You have Kimberly Karen, who is the Bowdoin. You'll see that those numbers offset each other. Mark Healy is getting a supplemental tax bill because there was a building on his property as of April 1st and we didn't pick it up. So they've since picked it up. Nicole Cludier, Judith Washburn, same thing. These are the other two of the tax bills. We abated these, so we're billing the right owner. And just so you know, when we do supplements and we send them to the new owner, because we're so close to taxes being due, we do make the first payment due 60 days out. So these supplementals will be due December 6th. So they're not expected to be due on Friday, because obviously, we need to mail them. Any questions? No. Just get all that, Robin. You got that, Ed?
Yeah, I got an easy one for it.
This is later.
Can we do it all?
This all comes from a licensed assessor outside of the building. I'm just here to be the middleman. Those are the abatements, and then I need you to sign the supplement telling me to collect an extra 15,789.
So what are we doing first?
Those are the abatements, and this is the supplement.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve all the abatements as described.
I'll second that.
By our town administrator.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Good.
And I guess I'm gonna make a motion to accept the certificate of supplement commitment as explained to us by our town administrator.
Second it. All in favor?
Lost my pen, and I didn't go anywhere. How does that happen?
No, did roll. I have extra.
Oh, Cheryl. Thank you. I went missed one. They're gonna want theirs. Okay. Did I tell you that Dennis was back working in the office two days a week?
Yes.
Good.
That's great.
He's doing good. Good, what a serious year of recovery.
We'll send that back down to him?
Yep.
That was a?
Yeah.
Square pond, I mean, wheat field.
Okay, we all set? Okay, I guess we'll go down to library request.
So the librarian, Elise Miller, came to me and discussed possibly using the election hall on Saturday, November 20th. It's coming before you, because there's a possibility of a conflict in the policy, and she wants to make sure that, you know, it's put in front of you. So the library has a group of crafters that want to do a fundraiser for them. It is gonna be a for-profit, so they'll, everybody that, it's gonna be a crafting event, so crafting sale, if you will. So everybody that, let's just say you knit hats. If you want to rent a table for that day, you know, you're gonna pay a table space, $20. I don't know if that's accurate or not. And all of the table space money will go to the library as part of the library fundraiser. However, the people that are selling the hats will make money off their hats. So it's considered for-profit when your policy for the use of the building talks about nonprofit, like the Lions Club. I mean, so it's kind of, it's kind of gray, it's right in the area, I mean, certainly if your policy, you have the...
It's more of a fundraiser, isn't it?
Well, it's, the spaces, yeah, it is, because the space money is going to the library. But she just wants to be transparent with you that the crafters themselves, you know, could make money on sales.
Right.
We've done, haven't we done different things like this over the years?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's like a crafts fair, you know, holiday craft fair, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, I mean, I can't think of one where they've, you know, I mean, it's...
I'd be more worried about it if, say, say it was a private person wanting to do it. But it's a town thing that we kinda support.
The library.
Yeah, and we're not necessarily, it's kinda nonprofit, because it's going back to it.
Well, portion of it is, yeah.
I understand, but she's making money for the, as a fundraiser, so it's really a fundraiser the way out.
It is, and then like I said, she, I would have just okayed it. We just wanted to make sure that you're, you're just okay.
I'm fine with it.
There's no conflicts, and nobody else needs or anything that day.
No, no, we always put town events to the, you know, use of the building first, and it's a Saturday, so.
I have no problem with it.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, order municipal offices.
Okay, each year around this time, per state law, you're required to sign an order of municipal officers pursuant to 36 MSRA 906. What it says is that we, the municipal officers of the town of Acton, Maine, upon requests of the tax collector and treasurer of the town of Acton, hereby authorize and direct said tax collector and treasurer pursuant to to apply any tax payment received from an individual as payment for a property tax against outstanding or delinquent taxes first. So all this does is it directs us to apply any payments that come into the oldest year first.
Doesn't it say something like that in the town warrant anyway?
Uh, not about the, about the year.
Okay. That's fine.
I might.
So do we just make a motion?
Make a motion to sign it.
All right, so make a motion to sign the order of municipal officers.
Second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right, what do we do here? Can you check the live feed? Someone's messaging that the live feed is out. Can you ask them?
Is she back there?
Yeah, she's in the office.
Oh, okay, maybe she's doing something.
Are we still alive?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, we're gonna go down to District 2 estimates.
All right, so Mr. Doliper was in and presented some estimates. There's five of them, so I'm just gonna go through them, and then you guys, I'll pass them around. So the first one is Langley Shore Road for $1,269.96 plus gravel. What are you doing over there?
We're gonna be doing the shoulders next week. We'll be picking the machine up either Friday or Monday. We're waiting to find out. Saco has one right now, they're hemming and hawing about buying it. So either I'm gonna go to Saco or hook sit to pick it up, and then we're gonna get our shoulders done next week.
What kind of shoulder machines? The one that hooks to the truck?
Goes right on the skid steer.
Okay.
And then just, we'll be having the dump truck, I have Dalton lined up with his 10-wheeler
Yep.
for next week, and get my stuff done. Will's gonna do his first. And I'll go up with Will and just help him figure it out, just in my own time, just learn how to use this thing. And then, it looks pretty slick, it should go pretty quick. So I kinda did a guesstimate of what this is gonna be, because we've never used the machine, so.
So the estimates for what?
For doing the shoulders.
Skid steer for six hours, truck 12 yards, six hours, labor and flagger for six hours, compactor for six hours, and gravel is to be determined.
Yeah, so it's just doing the shoulder work for all the new paving.
Okay. So the gravel's not added in?
No, because I don't know exactly, because like Langley Shore's got six inches, eight inches, some of the sandboard's only an inch to six inches. It's, you know, it's a guesstimate. I mean, I could do a quick guesstimate, but I don't know.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be proper just to have them have a higher number?
Stick a number in there.
Stick a number in, that way they wouldn't have to worry about it.
Yep.
Well, he has 1,269.96 plus gravel.
I thought you said it wasn't a gravel.
Well, no, he says plus gravel, so if you initial this, it'll, we'll know that the gravel's, that you've okayed it, other than the price of the gravel.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and the gravel's gonna be a set number, once it comes in, so.
And that's gonna come.
Monarch, where I get it from.
That's gonna come from the company and not Adam, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
All right, so the next one is Canal Road, 3,820 feet, same price, 1,269.96. Riverview, 5,460 feet of shoulders for 1,693.28 plus gravel. Sandborne Road, 12,900 feet of shoulders, $2,963.24 plus gravel. And then the next one is paving over two culverts on County Road, he's estimating.
I got a call from Bruce Smith, our car last Thursday.
$321.
Yep. They're not gonna be able to pave those roads this year. Their paving crews out with COVID. They got COVID in their paving crew, they're out for two weeks, puts them even further behind. He's like, I don't want to make this phone call, but we can't do anything until the spring for you. So the ones I, they were gonna grind, I just kept them maintained, so they were flat. I wasn't gonna waste the money paving them, if they're gonna grind them right up.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go get those taken care of this week, and get those covered over and prepped. I got a bunch of potholes I gotta fix up there, too, so. threw me for a little loop, but it is what it is.
Well, you got the spring.
Yep.
Got quite a bit done already, right?
Yeah, we got quite a bit done. A lot of happy people.
Nice.
So these, do or don't approve?
You just have to initial them to acknowledge them, that's what the, yeah, that's what the policy says, or ordinance says.
Yeah, we're not making a motion on that.
Nope.
So the county road, when you're putting, where you're just going over the top of the two culverts, that road's still got a hot top on it, it hasn't been ground or anything, it's just...
Yep, there's just a bunch of potholes I'm gonna fix now. They were coming the day after Columbus Day.
Yep.
And they called that Thursday beforehand, and I felt bad for Bruce, because he's just banging his head against the wall, they're just not winning this year.
The weather, rain has been, the rain this year.
They had a paver get hit on the turnpike, I guess, damaged one of the pavers, I mean, they're just not winning.
Seems to be a lot of that going around. We had one of those in Rollinsford.
Oh, really?
Dump truck hit the paver and pinned the driver of the paver in his seat, had to use the jaws to get him out. Yeah, no serious injuries, but still.
Good. Well, we get the spring, and we'll get it done.
Yep.
Done. I was hoping to pave a nice smooth road for a little bit.
It looks like you have enough to keep you busy anyways right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
It may be for the best.
Yep.
So we're gonna wait for Kim there, she had to use the...
Yep.
They have the time to announce that the Acton Elementary School brought in a box for candy donations. They do their annual trunk retreat, so they put boxes around town and ask people to bring candy in to donate it. So when you're out and about shopping, I'd like to see you all in the bag next week.
I intended to bring one in, but I hate it.
You didn't even know the box was there. I know, that's the only problem, and I said to her, I was very honest with her, I'm like, oh. She's like, can I put this here? I'm like, oh.
I can skip, I'll do the announcements.
So tempting.
Sure, do announcements.
I'm gonna do announcements while I'm waiting. So we got a rec committee meeting on the 18th at 5:30. On the 20th, Board of Selectmen, 6 o'clock. On the 21st, Planning Board, 6 o'clock. The 25th, Zone and Board of Appeals, 6 PM. 27th, Capital Improvement, 4:30. And the 27th, Board of Selectmen at 6 PM. Look at that, perfect timing. Okay, we're gonna go down to E. Warrant Finance Committee. So I had, I added this on here. I had some concerns with the last Warrant Finance Committee meeting. So I watched it, and so my concerns is that I understand the Warrant Finance Committee has to make, you know, get all their members, everybody, their positions, you know, Chair and all that, and Secretaries. But after that, the conversations went off the rails a little bit. And a little concerning on some of the, some of the stuff that was being said. The accusations, pretty much, I found it to be a, part of it, not all of it, but a lot of it was, you know, opinionated from certain people, or just bashing a selectman, and honestly, a lot of the stuff was untruthful. That we're not allowing the, the, the board, the Finance Committee to do their job. And we did, we did a policy last year for a reason, you know, because we felt there was individuals on that committee that weren't being involved, like they, you know, being left out. And, but saying that, you know, going through the ordinance, and as you go through the ordinance, every bit of it explains that there's really, the only reason that we should be having a Warrant Finance Meeting is to go over warrant articles. And there's no warrant articles right now, so I don't feel that, you know, we should be... After watching that meeting and the stuff that was being said, I don't feel that we should be videotaping and give any platform to certain people just to do what they were doing, running their mouths about, and lying about certain things. And until there's a warrant article to the ordinance, I don't feel that we should be videoing, until they have a warrant article in hand. So, because we're looking at the ordinance, we're not even supposed to be having a meeting. And I don't want discouraged meetings, you know, and that's not what I'm trying to do, I'm not trying to discourage it.
We want, we also want productive meetings.
Exactly, and it was, there wasn't a whole lot productive about that one.
You know, whether it's this meeting or any other meeting, you know, you're there to, you're there for a reason, and that's what we should be working on. Not, you know, veering off. I know it's hard sometimes to kinda control things and keep things on track. But I would like to see our committees, you know, doing, doing the work that they need to do.
It was almost two hours, that meeting, and really, that meeting should have been pick in Chair, a Secretary, and figuring out who's a vote member, who wasn't. And I don't even know if that was even figured out. But I tell you, there was a lot of stuff, I mean, there was comments made about towns shouldn't be paying their bills and doing, it just, there was a lot of unproductive stuff being said, that I don't believe that we should be wasting our time videotaping. Until there's an actual warrant article in hand, there's no sense in taping these meetings. I don't believe there's any sense in having a meeting until there's a warrant article in hand. So I'm suggesting that we stop videoing those until there's an actual warrant article in hand.
Is there any openings on that committee, or is it all full?
No, it's full.
No, it's full, okay.
So that's just a suggestion of mine, but I believe it's being used as a platform just to, you know, go off track and talk about things that aren't really part of the budget process that the ordinance says. And until there is, there's no reason to have it videoed.
Yeah, there's what, five items that they need to cover?
Yeah.
And that's...
There's five what?
There's five, five items, isn't there?
Oh, their duties.
Yeah, their duties, so.
And, so.
Why would you even think that they would meet until they had a warrant article, you know, the next time anyhow, so.
They do, they did schedule a meeting, I feel like it's in November.
Yep, I just...
I don't have a problem with not, you know, until they get to the warrant, you know, not videotaping it. But if we do that, then we're going to need handwritten minutes, right?
Yeah, they're gonna have to write their minutes down if they feel, you know, I don't want to tell the Finance Committee not to have a meeting.
No, we're not saying that, we're just saying that unless you get a warrant in front of you.
I just, I just feel that it's unfortunate that we have new members on this committee, and I'm really excited about that. But I, the, where we, where that meeting went, just, I felt it was just being used as a good way to, as a platform to crap all over us and veer off the rails. And, and because it's on TV, they do that on purpose, and I don't wanna, I don't feel that we should be allowing that. If they have an issue where we work, we come right up here and say it right here, but to pay somebody to go videotape something just for that purpose, ah, I'm not good with that. So. Do we have, do we have to make a motion?
No, I just need to make sure there's at least a...
Yeah, I'm fine with that, let's see how it works, see how it goes.
Yeah, and in no way do we want to say that you cannot have a meeting.
Absolutely.
They can have meetings, just unless you get a warrant in front of you. We're not gonna videotape it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to my guests.
Public comment next?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's probably a good idea, we're gonna skip down to public comment, because we do have an executive session, so. Any public comment?
Speaking of a Warrant Finance Committee, why do we even have to have a Warrant and Finance Committee? Because you guys look over the budget that each department hands to you. We go to town meeting, and from the Chair said, "Town meeting always has the rule." So I don't even know why we even have that committee, by the truth.
The Finance Warrant Committee should be a really good committee, you know, because you really ought to have someone oversee us. We, when we put forward a budget to the town, you know, we don't want anybody to think that we're just trying to slide things through. So by going through the Finance Committee, in theory, you know, you know, they should be able to look through it, and, you know, and obviously catch something, maybe even come up with some ideas. But it should be a good thing.
And it's not, I've watched that meeting, too, it's not, it's, we have...
And it's not. I've watched that meeting, too. It's not, it's, we have people in town, it's like the Hatfield McCoy. They're picking on, you know, they're bashing this one, bashing that one, the other one's bashing the other family or whatever. I think that needs to stop, the whole damn town needs to stop that ASAP. On the other hand, as far as the finance committee meeting, you just explained it to me. The bid process we go through, again, Mr. Waterhouse, if he was on the Board of Finance Committee, should understand the chair has said, "Town meeting has the rule." Town meeting came up and said, "Yep, we're gonna pay this bill for the generator." It was, should nothing have been said about the generator last year going through procedures, that was just another stone thrown at you guys because you didn't follow the procedure. The procedure, yes, when we don't go to town meeting, I totally agree with the procedure. But when we're at town meeting and the procedure comes up and the town votes, yes, this is the one we want, it should never have been brought up two weeks ago.
Well, the unfortunate thing is, is we, at town meeting, we all assumed that's what we were going with. The problem is, unless, and, and, and because when Rick came up and explained everything, we were under the assumption, this is what we were doing, we were going with our guy, that we always did. He was a low bid, just like we did with our heating guy. We go with the people that we use so we get service. But the problem is, is if you wanna nitpick and everything else, and I understand that, you know, we didn't do it correctly.
Right.
Because we did, the only way that we could have done it at town meeting, we would have had to have the bid on a, on a warrant article with his name on it. But we, we assumed that we were going, and we were in a, in a situation where honestly, the decision had to be made to get it in. It was more of an emergency than anything.
We had a building, a public safety, public safety building that had no electricity in it.
Yeah.
Your house catches a fire, and it takes us five minutes for one person to lift the door up and one to hold the ladder and everything else. That's unsusceptible.
No, no.
It should not happen in this time of day.
And, and we.
And that's why we need it. It was an emergency. You guys have the opportunity, if it's an emergency, to overrun everything. If you have your ducks in line, you have the authority to, I think you have the authority, to overrun and say, yes, town acting, this is an emergency, we need it now, and be done with it. This nitpicking, throwing stones at each other's families and all this stuff needs to stop.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Oh, the gentleman.
There you go. Didn't see you there.
Slow walking. Do I still have to give my name?
If you, yeah, probably a good idea, because the public knows who you are.
So anyway, did you guys have a nice summer?
Did you? How was it? Good.
I did. Summer without pain. But anyway, the reason why I'm up here is I wanted to ask about the auditor. As we know, we've used the same auditor for over twenty years. And it's recommended by accountants and so forth that every three to five years, you change your auditor. So I was wondering where we are with that.
We have a new person this year, correct?
So we're in the middle of a contract. I'll have to pull it and see what you guys sign. Yeah, the gentleman that started the audit this year, none of us had ever met.
It's a new auditor.
Is it the same?
Same company, because.
Different auditor.
You're supposed to change companies.
So last year, when you, last year or the year before, when you brought this up at every meeting, they still signed the contract. Did you sign a three-year contract, I believe?
I think it was.
So let me double-check and see how long they, because they did hear you, I would think, loud and clear, last year, and they, they signed another contract anyway. So let me see how far they are into the contract. I don't know.
Because it really should not be the same company.
So I can tell you.
And I understand what the problem is, is that first year, a new company.
It's not a problem for us at all. We encourage it, and I will tell you, if you call surrounding towns, I can tell you, Shapley, for example, has gone out to bid three times for an auditor, and they've gotten one bid. It is now finding firms to do it, so I don't, I mean, I don't disagree with you. We don't care who audits us. We encourage and we enjoy it, believe it or not, as silly as that sounds, you know what I mean? My staff and I spent, what, an hour and a half today looking for a penny in our four hundred thousand dollar checks. We found it. We encourage audits, and we don't, we don't care who does it, so it's, you know, they send different people each time, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's a good auditing firm that, you know.
But the reality is, is you're supposed to change firms.
It's a recommendation, like there's a lot of recommendations in life. Let me pull the contract and I'll put it on the next week's.
For over twenty years.
I don't know that it's been that long, but I'll look.
But, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, you know, we guys, different person actually, doing it.
I don't think last year's lady even works there anymore, and I know that Bruce, who did us for many years, he went to work for the state of Maine. We haven't seen Ron Smith since the time that he came down. I think we've seen him in ten years.
This is maybe the third person in four years?
They change regularly, but, but I mean, but.
But you're still with the same firm.
Well, it's the person that, to me, it's like a law firm. It's the person.
Right, we've been having the same attorneys for years.
Yeah, yeah.
The point is, is if after three to five years, you're really kind of auditing yourself. So that's why bringing in a new firm is really what's recommended.
Sometimes.
I mean, I'm not making this up. You can Google it.
Yeah, we're certainly not auditing ourselves, though, and I would encourage anybody to come in and watch the process and see what they ask for and what the process looks like. We're not involved in it at all.
No, I realize that.
And they meet with the board before they meet with us in the end, so as employees, privately without us, so I don't, you know. But no, I, you know, we don't have an issue with it.
Honestly, at the end of the day, what you're really is, you're making the assumption that, you know, these people, after three to five years, aren't qualified to do their job, and so.
Well, that was not my assumption at all, at all.
But it's like anything, you know, any, any profession, you know, you can change, and sometimes change isn't a good thing. And you find that you've probably been out for the last person you had. We seem to have had pretty good luck so far with these guys.
They give us different recommendations every year. There's always things that we gotta do better or different. I mean, every, we've never, we've never had a year that, you know, they don't come back and find something.
You know, if it's not a big deal, why not do, why not do what is recommended? Right?
I'll pull the contract and let you know where you are, so you can decide if you want to. I mean, if you're in a one-year, maybe you can have the conversation. If you're in a three-year, then.
We're not gonna make a big deal out of this until we know we're at the end of a contract.
Right, yeah. I'll pull it.
Yeah, we're not, yeah.
Let's see where we are within that contract, and then we'll go from there.
Yep.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ooh, anybody else? Oh, you come right on up.
Comment against the wall, too, had his hand raised.
Oh. You don't have to raise your hand. You just come right up if you want to speak. Oh, oh, okay. I thought it was somebody else.
It was, it was, David.
Okay.
Yes, good evening. I'm Tom McGurty. Live on West Shore Drive. Typically, it's been my experience when you're engaging an auditor, you don't contract for three years or multiple years. You'll get a bid where they'll lay out their pricing for perhaps a three-year period, but it allows you to change at any time. So I'd suggest you look at that.
Absolutely.
The other thing is if it hasn't been put out to bid at all, there's nothing says you can't put it out to bid and keep the same firm. So that allows you to see if there are other interested parties, and just keep the process open and transparent.
That's why we're gonna look and see what our.
And I feel like we went out to bid this last time, but I feel like we did go out to bid this last time, and you're absolutely right on the one to three years. So I'll pull it, and you never know what they're gonna say at public comment.
They should be able to lock in their pricing for three years without you actually having to commit.
Yeah, we didn't, we definitely didn't commit that way, and that may be the wording, so it's always hard when, when you come to the podium, trying to remember everything at once, but I'll have it on as old business for next week with an update and more clarity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Oh, yep.
Good evening. I'm Richard Leary. I live on West Shore Drive in Acton, Maine. One, I was at the meeting last night, and the Amicor of Engineers seemed to make it relatively clear that if you're going to do anything with that bridge and you add any material, they're not too happy about that. They have a certain procedure, and if you don't follow that procedure, you have to get permission to do other things. That's pretty much what I picked up from that. The gentleman was very helpful and very, you know, informative, but he made it pretty clear that that's their rule. So I was looking at things today, and I'm just very curious. I mean, in the past, I was up here when that bridge was built. And my recollection is that we went through Mr. Peppin's property, put an auxiliary road in, and we drove around, and he has that huge bridge in his property, you know, over the stream.
Through his pit, yeah.
He's just put in a new road up the, just a bit up from there for new development. And it just seems to me that you could utilize that road, go through his pit again, and bypass that bridge completely. His property's for sale. I don't know if it makes sense to buy his property. Then you could sell the remaining property off in time for housing and probably regain all the money you've spent on it.
Yeah, I, I.
And close that bridge down completely.
The property's already under contract, just so you know.
Okay, I, I.
Yeah, I'm just trying to save you, yeah.
I don't pretend to know, you know.
Somebody has purchased that property.
Okay, but I was just curious, I'm saying, all this is going on, you've been looking at this for several years. I mean, it's gonna be several more years, I'm afraid, before you can resolve it. And meanwhile, that bridge is falling apart, and with all the activity down there and the expansion. I mean, I even had a big truck come in. I had a tree come down. The utilities wouldn't do about it. It was hanging over the power lines. It was hanging over my neighbor's property. They had to come in and chop that thing up and move it. They had to bring a big ass truck in to haul that thing out of there. I mean, and it went over the bridge, and it really isn't built for that.
Well, I mean, it was, it was constructed for that. It was constructed for that. It's just been deteriorating. I mean, and it's a, it's a culvert.
It's a culvert. I remember when it was built. I mean, there were big issues about it then. There's issues now, and thirty years, there'll be issues again. There's too many turns, and we can go on and on. I'm not trying to find fault with anybody. You're trying to resolve it. But it, it just dawned on me, today I'm riding along, and I go, why don't we just, you know, turn around and buy that property and convert the whole thing and avoid that whole bridge? It would still be accessible to boats. Just leave it alone. Okay, but that's not accessible.
Yeah, I, we.
I just thought I presented, because it, I said, if I thought of it, somebody else had to think about it, I mean.
We appreciate the town for our better than I.
The code officer actually just told me this morning that, that he got a call from the purchaser regarding what could be done with it. I don't want to disclose too much, but that's how I knew it was under contract, so.
All right, but I mean, that bridge, something needs to be done. That thing's gonna collapse. And, you know, I have all kinds of company. My parents have passed, but the ambulances went out of there several times for my family. And I don't want to see that, you know, not available. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to go in Executive Session 405, 6A dash one.
And I'm gonna second that.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah. And all in favor? Okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we come out of Executive Session 405, 6A dash one.
Second that. All in favor? Okay.
I abstained.
Yep. As abstains, there was no decision made, whereas we were still looking for a superintendent for the transfer station, and we plan on having a decision for next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, we'll have a decision as far as the transfer station.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.